This meeting of the Haltem City City Council is now in session. The invocation pledge of allegiance led by Councilmember Hutchinson. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've asked Ryan Murphy from Love Never Fails to come and give us the invocation tonight. Welcome, Ryan.
Evening, Mayor, Council. Let's pray. Father, we thank you that you've sustained the council and the city of Haltem City. And, Lord, we just give you the honor for all that you've done, Lord, for this wonderful leadership that you've provided for us and in all of the city. We pray that you would just watch over every department in this week, Lord, and that you would do your will and protect the fire, protect the police, protect everyone, just protect all of the council and everyone present. We just ask that special blessing and protection. And, Lord, may your presence be in this meeting and may your wisdom and your guidance. We just thank you and we praise you for all that you've done in this council, Lord, and all you've done in the city in the last few years. We give you the honor and the glory and all the praise, and we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. And tonight's announcement and events, Ms. Fran Burns. Fran?
Hi. Quite a few things coming up in Haltem City this next couple of weeks, so bear with me. Final day for adult softball registration is the Saturday, March 3rd. League play is available for men, women's, and co-ed teams. Call the Haltem City Recreation Center at 817-831-6464 for details. The public is invited to learn about the proper care and cultivation of trees at the Haltem City Arbor Day Celebration set for 10:00 a.m., Saturday, March 10th. The program will take place at the Haltem Recreation Center at 4839 Broadway Ave. And will include a presentation about the importance of trees. Texas Hardy Trees will be given to the first family, forty families in attendance. The program will also feature a performance by the John D. Spicer Elementary School Choir. Entries are currently being accepted in the 19th Annual Images of Haltem City Photo Contest. Winning works will be featured in the community calendar for 2008, and photographers of winning images taken in Haltem City will receive cash prizes. The deadline is Thursday, March 22nd, 2007. Photographers may enter up to five works. Photos will be judged in the following categories: people and their activities, Haltem City scenes, animals, the spirit of Haltem City, and on the road. Haltem City's Spring Fest, the community's annual welcome to spring, is scheduled for 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., Saturday, March 31st at Broadway Park. And the park is at 4839 Broadway Ave. City residents of all ages are invited to enjoy games, hayrides, music, food, a visit with the Easter Bunny, and much more. The Easter Egg Hunt will begin promptly at noon, and that's that event that's over with like by 12:03, so everybody that wants to participate, please be there by noon. Free tax preparation assistance is being offered at two Haltem City locations. Help is available from noon until 4:00 p.m. Mondays at the Senior Center and Thursdays at the library. Those interested in taking advantage of the free tax help may make an appointment or must make an appointment. Call the Senior Center, 834-8021, or the library at 222-7786. Creative writers, get ready to put pen to paper, creating a short story or a poem to enter in the 7th Annual Texas Writers Month Contest sponsored by the Haltem City Public Library. The deadline is late May. It's not too early to get started now, though. And the guidelines are currently available at City Hall and at the library. The Haltem City Government Access Channel, available through Charter Cable, is moving to Channel 27. HCTV is not going away, it's just moving up the dial. And I checked today, it's still on Channel 7, but that should occur at any time. Instead of 7, watch HCTV on 27. All the above information may be obtained through the city's information line at 222-7768. You can access our website at www.haltemcitytx.com or pick up a community calendar if you've not already. These are available at all municipal buildings. And before I sit down, I want to announce that the new sign at the rec center is up and operating. Those who pass by can read about activities at the rec and other city departments. The sign also broadcasts the time and temperature, so thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Fran. Appreciate it. Next on the agenda is the, we have a couple of reports. First is the monthly financial report for January 2007. Mr. Joel Welch.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, members of the council. Enclosed in your packet for your study and review is the monthly financial report for the fiscal year through January 31st, 2007. It is prepared by the Finance Department, which is located currently in Bob Ray Sanders' favorite other City Hall.[385.12][385.12](Laughter) A few items have come to note in looking at the monthly report. The first thing that I want to mention is when I was looking at the collections of property taxes, and I believe I did note it in the report, was by this time of the year, we're normally seeing 73% to 75% of our property taxes collected by the end of January. In fact, we were at approximately 70%, and I did note that fact. I had not had a chance to pursue the reason for that, but in fact, I had lunch with some other Northeast Finance Directors last Thursday, and we were all discussing that everyone's tax collections were a little bit below where they were supposed to be. And apparently, the county was just a little bit behind at the end of January, and these should be catching up at the, or should have caught up during the month of February. As we get our numbers together, I'll be able to let you know in the next monthly report if that has indeed been the case. Sales taxes for the year continue to be at a more moderate, more expected level. As I mentioned last month, we had enjoyed a great deal of growth in them over the past three years, but now we're coming back to something that's a little more to be expected for Haltem City from a historical perspective. It was a bit disheartening to notice that last month's collections were actually beneath the year before, even after we analyzed them for some of the prior periods that we received, the prior periods withheld. There's many factors that go into a sales tax payment, but when we were looking at just the current portion, we were slightly behind. As I look at the model, it was not significant enough to change my expectations of meeting the budget and slightly exceeding it for the year. I'll keep an eye on this, of course, as we go through the year. One of the subjects that has come up, there were some questions about it today even, has been some of our collections through the municipal court. A couple of factors are driving a little bit better. Really, there's about three factors driving a little bit better than expected collection in the municipal court for this fiscal year thus far. There has been a moderate increase in citations issued by the Police Department. There has also been a bit of an increase in citations written by code enforcement, both of these going together. In any course of a month, the volume of code enforcement tickets are now floating at close to 50% of the volume of police-issued tickets. The third factor is we are about to enter into that ticket roundup phase again, and we've been doing this for about three years now, and each year it has been remarkably successful. And I am now thinking that people are beginning to expect the warrant roundups that come this time of year, and we're finding that folks with outstanding activity with our court are a great deal more interested in clearing up the activity with at least payment arrangements, if not payment. So there's a number of factors that have been driving that revenue source to be a little bit better than what we expected it to be this year. But overall, the general fund is performing fairly solidly. All of the departments are either within budget, or if there's been some seasonal items that have caused them to be a little bit out of range right now, they are not in a state where it's going to, I don't believe, any of them are in a state at this point where they cannot manage that and stay within the budgets that have been allotted for each department. The Water and Sewer Fund, as is my habit, I have included some projections on the Water and Sewer Fund, but in all honesty, at this writing, my projections from year in are very preliminary. I don't have a high percentage of confidence in them. We went through the very dry spell last year, then we went into the last four months of the year, which were much wetter than the previous eight had been. Then we had a very wet, nearly historically wet January, followed by a nearly historically dry February. And so at this point, with the patterns being so fluid, my models are giving me conflicting information. I have an estimate in there. I will be giving you better, a better feel on the Water and Sewer Fund as time goes by. What I can tell you right now is that the fund, as far as we're doing right now, is doing all right. It's doing all right. If we get a discernible pattern together and it looks like we may need to make some adjustments, we will, you know, I'll be making some recommendations and we'll be doing as such. Otherwise, I'll keep you apprised of how we're doing there. There are a couple of funds that I do want to keep a close eye on for the fiscal year, just due to the circumstances involving them. The Drainage Utility, I did put some notes in the summary for y'all to read about my interest in keeping a very close eye on expenditures in the Drainage Utility. As you know, revenues do not grow in the Drainage Utility, and we are to a point now where the expenditures are very tight in comparison to the revenue stream, so we're going to have to keep a very close eye on it this year. The other one is the Crime District, and the Crime District is also in a similar state, even though it's a sales tax-backed fund, I'm only projecting sales taxes to possibly exceed budget by about $37,000. And as such, we'll be having to keep a very close eye on the Crime District. As far as the investment policy goes, our portfolio is still slightly above $30 million. It is about where I would expect it to be about this time. We did draw down this past month, but we did have some debt service payments and we had some capital expenditures. Since 50%, slightly over 50% of our portfolio is in capital money, it's not unexpected to have the portfolio go down at times during the year as we're paying for a lot of capital projects. We continue to aggressively pursue our benchmark, and our benchmark came back to us a little bit this past month. The performance of our fund, our own weighted average yield, also dropped just very slightly, but we're still within striking distance of our benchmark, and I would say this is very good because our benchmark is a 180-day Treasury Bill, and our portfolio has a weighted average maturity of only 90 days. So we are much shorter than the target we're chasing, and to be as close as we are is a good thing. As I've mentioned in the past few months, we're getting into that great time of this fiscal year in which some of the instruments that we bought two years ago, when market yields were very low, these instruments are now beginning to mature. We had one mature in January. We've had another one mature in February, and these are all items that were earning 3.5% or less. When we bought them two years ago and three years ago, they were good investments, they were market, but the markets changed. And when we go to reinvest these funds now, we'll be reinvesting somewhere between 4.8% and 5%. So we'll have an opportunity to help the operating side of the house and even the capital projects with some investment earnings.
Any questions for Joel? On the financial report, the January financial report. Thank you, Joel. Appreciate it. I'll now entertain a motion to approve. Mr. Sutton.
I approve the monthly financial report for January 2007.
Mr. Cabano.
That's for Second Mayor.
Any discussion? Please register your vote. That is unanimous. Mr. Holcomb is out to that on business, so he won't be with us. Next on the agenda is the Capital Improvement Status Report. David?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. See if I can get through this thing tonight. Capital improvement report for this month, we'll start off with the streets. We have a reconstruction project. As you well know, the city's reconstructing Vicki, Glenhaven, Bealy, and Harris Lane. This particular project includes installing new water mains, sanitary sewer, and storm drains, new concrete streets and sidewalks. We're moving right along. The project has had no kinks, if you will, and we're about 60% complete on this particular project. The next street project is Woods Lane. This is the annual CDBG project that the council did approve last fiscal year, and it's still in the engineering phase. This particular street will also receive new water, sewer, storm drain, a new concrete street, and sidewalks. The next particular project is reconstruction of Meadow Oaks from Webster to Vicki. This project also includes installing new water, sewer, six-inch asphalt overlay along with some new sidewalks. The Department of Public Works is actually performing this particular job, and we're about 20% complete. Water and sewer projects. Highway 377 water main, it's substantially complete. We had a great contractor that came in, actually in November, and he's just doing a punch list for us, so this time next month, this particular item will be off the list. It's gone real well. The Midway Road water line between Carson and Menace, we hope to bring an engineering, award a bid next month at the next council meeting, so we're moving right along with this particular project. The next item is the tank repair and reconditioning project at North Oaks Pump Station. You will consider awarding a contract for a company to come in and recondition that at tonight's meeting. The next project is the Young Street Water Main. This project will eliminate some dead ends and mains and provide fire protection for existing industries as well as future projects, and we hope to award a contract at next month's meeting also. The next item is the Diamond Oaks Sanitary Sewer. This project includes replacing approximately 2,000 feet of the deteriorated sanitary sewer main along a tributary of Big Fossil Creek around the Diamond Oaks subdivision, and it's still being engineered. The next project is the evaluation of the North Oaks and Higgins Lane pump stations. The city is currently evaluating all the mechanical and electrical components of both pump stations, determining what systems need to be upgraded in order to meet the city's present and future water demands. Many of the mechanical and electrical systems are outdated, as you well know, and large amounts of energy it takes to function at this particular location. The goal of this evaluation is to determine which component should be replaced or rehabilitated so that pump stations operate at the highest efficiency possible, and this is also being engineered at this time. Drainage projects, we have two that we continually update you with no updates, if you will. The one is the Little Fossil Creek Improvement Project. This project includes channel improvements and adjacent hike and bike trail, and we still have no update about the funding from our federal government on this particular project. We were fortunate to have, and the next project is Big Fossil Creek Consortium Study. We were fortunate enough to have the folks from COG last month come and update us on this particular project. Of course, the objective of this project is to study the Big Fossil Creek watershed and provide recommendations to the cities to correct drainage issues in the watershed. And finally, I don't know if Mr. Barnett wants to touch base on this particular project or not. It's the library.
He's feverishly taking notes here.
Oh, okay.
I'm taking instructions here. Sorry, David.
Okay.
What we got in your packet talks about the FNS Partners, in meeting with them, our architects on this project. We finalized the colors and materials for the interior and on the exterior. We've also looked at all the requirements for all the data communications and electrical outlets throughout the facility. We spent about six hours about two weeks ago in Dallas going through all this. It was a pretty detailed meeting. And then the other part we've done is we've plotted the entire area and we've done some grubbing, thanks to Public Works, and thank you, David, for doing that work, to in preparation for the relocation of the power lines which go through the center of that property. Once that's submitted, TXU will inform us of when they're going to relocate those lines and if any cost is going to be associated with the relocation of those lines. In my office, some of you have seen a small scale of what the library looks like. I'll be making a presentation to the library board tomorrow night on the library, again showing the materials for the exterior and the interior, and I plan to bring that to the council for a formal presentation on your March 12th meeting. We're getting close.
With that said, that is the report. Answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Fain?
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it. Next on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda is considered to be self-explanatory and will be enacted by the council with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. Approval of the Consent Agenda authorizes the city manager to implement each item in accordance with staff or board recommendations. Consent Agenda denied is items three through nine. Items three through nine, hear a motion? Mr. Clark.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I make a motion that we approve the Consent Agenda as presented, which will be three through nine.
Mr. Hutchinson. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That'd be a second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the Consent Agenda. Any discussion? Please register your vote. And that is unanimous. On the regular agenda, item 10, Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for Fiscal Year 2005 and '06. Mr. Charles Worrell, you want to introduce our guest? Our controller. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This is the second year that Weaver and Tidwell has audited our financial statements, and I'm happy to announce that we, that everything is great. We've got a clean opinion, and we've added some fund balance to the general fund and some other funds as well. Bob Laritz from Weaver and Tidwell is the partner in charge of our audit, and he is going to be presenting the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report to the council.
Bob? Like Charles said, I'm the partner on the engagement, and I want to thank the council and city staff for having us back out for a second year. That means the first year didn't go so bad, so we came out for another year.
Bob, would you make an adjustment to that? Make sure we're picking you up there. All right.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. The first year is always a little more of a challenge because it's a big learning process for everybody involved, so coming back the second year is always a goal after that first year. As Charles mentioned, the opinion that we issued on the financial statements for the city is an unqualified opinion, which is the highest form of assurance that an accounting firm can give on a set of financial statements. And technically, when you get down to it, those two pages that have our letterhead on, it's really the only part of the financial statements that's ours. The rest of the book is the responsibility of the city. We've gone through and looked at it, made sure it agrees to the financial statements that we audited. It meets all the requirements for presentation of the financial statements, so as a result, like I said, there's an unqualified opinion. Real quick, as for about the last four or five years, there's really two sets of financial statements in here. One that presents the city kind of as a business that they implemented with the new Gatsby 34 standard a couple of years ago, and the other is more of a modified cash basis, which is what all the governments reported on for the, you know, how many ever years before they decided it wasn't good enough anymore. The first set of financial statements is, like I said, presents it more like a business, full accrual accounting. It puts the assets and debt on the financial statements and breaks it out between governmental activities and business-type activities. Governmental are your typical governmental, fire, police, things that are more supported by taxes than user charges. And the business-type activities are just the opposite. They're more supported by user charges, such as your water and sewer and the drainage are the two business-type activities. So it breaks it down into those two big, broad groups. Both of those groups have got positive net assets, which is essentially the equity of the city, so that's on the positive side, having positive net assets. Real quickly, the other set of statements are more of what everybody was used to seeing. It shows it all broken out by the funds. The general fund being the one that most people look at because that's carrying the majority of the activities of the city. The general fund for fiscal 2006, as Charles mentioned, did show an increase in the fund balance of about $1.1 million. So essentially, majority of that is tax revenue of some form or fashion, property tax, sales tax, franchise tax. Out of the total 17 million of revenues, that represented 14 million of the total. And on the expenses, public safety is the biggest chunk of expense, covering primarily the fire and the police services. That's about $9.5 million out of the 16 million of the total expenses. But, you know, they're showing a total fund balance of $4.7 million. It's about 25% of the total expenditures for a year. We didn't see any big issues with any of the numbers and where the city is sitting when we did the audit. Basically, kind of what I want to go over, I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody might have on the statements. We'll add that we did, we got full cooperation from the city staff, which always makes our life easier as well, so we do, we thank Charles and Joel and their staff for the help.
Thank you. Any questions for Bob? Thanks, sir. Appreciate it. Well, you've heard the presentation for the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for the fiscal year '05 and '06. Do we have a motion to dispose? Mr. Cabano.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I move that we accept the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for fiscal year 2005, 2006 as presented.
Ms. Branson.
That would be for a second, Mayor.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for fiscal year 2005 and '06. Any further discussion? Please register your vote. And that is unanimous. Thank you. Next on the agenda is item 11, Ad Florum Tax Abatement Policy. This is consideration interaction approving an amended abatement policy. Is, you going to present that?
This will probably be a two-pronged show between the city attorney and myself. This was reviewed by Economic Development Corporation just last week. They've made some recommendations in here. A lot of them had to do with the format to how the policy was put together, moving some items around. Most specifically, allowing for the authorization request for the abatement is filed to the city manager versus the city council. There was refinement of the definition of non-manufacturing facilities, which is now identified as commercial facilities, and we changed, we moved the explanation of full-time jobs from that consisting of 2,000 more hours into the area to which we have definitions. And then you want to add, city attorney?
As we discussed in the pre-council meeting, your current tax payment policy expired back in June. You need to renew it because by state law, the policies are only good for two years. You need to renew it if you want to be able to do tax abatements, and there is one that is being considered by the council right now, so I can recommend adoption of this policy. If you've got any questions about any of the items in there, I'll be glad to address them.
Would it be fair to say, Wayne, that there were no substantive changes made? I mean, we just made some-
That's correct.
-procedural things.
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Any questions? If any discussion? Not, I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Hutchinson. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to-
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to make a motion to approve the Ad Valorem Tax Abatement, the new or revised Ad Valorem Tax Abatement Policy.
And Ms. Branson.
That would be for a second, Mayor.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Ad Valorem Tax Abatement Policy. Any further discussion? Please register your vote. And that is unanimous. Next part of our agenda is the public hearings and ordinances. Item 12, ordinance number O-2007-010-03. This is consideration in our action regarding designating a reinvestment zone under the Tax Abatement Act. And this is for the first reading. You going to tell us a little bit about that?
We're going to try this one more time. This is establishment of a reinvestment zone. We have had in the past enterprise zones which were established within our city. However, state law has changed as far as the designation of locations where enterprise zones could be located. The Sarah Lee property does not now, is not inclusive in that enterprise zone. In establishing a reinvestment zone, it will encompass the Sarah Lee property. As the mayor has indicated, this will be a first reading on this. We'll have a second reading on this, and that'll be on the March 12th meeting. There are some other issues I think the city attorney wishes to address.
Tax abatement is a three-step process. The first step, you just approved with the last action that you took approving the tax abatement policy. This ordinance in front of you now is the second step because state law says you have to designate a reinvestment zone before you can approve a tax abatement on the property. And the purpose of this is for the city council to determine that this reinvestment zone that you would be adopting is an area that you want to promote development or redevelopment in. Therefore, if you approve this tonight on first reading, there will be a second reading of this ordinance on March the 12th. And between now and March the 12th, we will send notice out to all the other taxing units, and we will publish notice of this ordinance in the newspaper. Again, if there are any questions about this process, I'll be glad to address them.
Any questions for Wayne or Chuck? This is, yeah, Mr. Sutton.
Well, just in pre-council, we had talked about that for the councils to declare reinvestment zone. It's not really constrained that much, but there is one requirement for, can you comment on that, Wayne?
State law prohibits a tax abatement on any property that's owned by a city council member or a member of a zoning commissioner board. And this ordinance specifically notes that none of the property in this reinvestment zone is owned by any of those members. However, if for some reason it were, there would be no tax abatement that would be allowed on that property.
Thank you. And I want to point out that this is about a quarter of a million square foot addition worth about $31 million investment in our city. So this is a, this is a big one. This is, I'm going to go ahead and make, I don't think we're, this isn't necessarily a public hearing, is it? But since it's under the
Why don't you go ahead and open it up?
Yeah.
It's a public hearing. There will be a public hearing on the March 12th.
Second one. But we'll go ahead and take public input now. I'll open up the public hearing for this item, if anyone wants to speak for or against. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing then and entertain a motion. Mr. Sutton.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve ordinance number O-2007-010-03, reinvestment zone.
Mr. Cabano.
That's for a second, Mayor.
Mr. Hutchinson. Did you have some discussion?
No.
Okay, okay, okay. Any, it's been moved and seconded to approve the ordinance. Is there any further discussion? Please register your vote. And that is unanimous. There'll be, the second hearing will be on the 12th, is that right?
Correct.
Next item on the agenda is item 13. Lost my place here just a second. This is P-023-06, conducted public hearing in consideration or action regarding application of Chad Alvarez of Insight Capital Realty Company for final plat. James, you want to run us through that?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, this is a replat, hence the need for a public hearing. And if you'll recall, we first met on this on January 22nd of this year, in which the applicant asked to continue this hearing. We continued it through the February 12th meeting. We continued it through the February 26th meeting. And we've now come to an agreement on the documents. However, on February 22nd, staff received another request from Insight Capital through their attorney requesting the public hearing be postponed to March the 12th council meeting, again, to finalize the revisions. I think at the last moment, they were able to secure an easement with their adjacent neighbor, and they've changed the plan, the site plan up just a little bit. So it's going to afford its time, again, to sit down, review the documents, and review this change in the plat. So if you'll note from the correspondence that I did receive on the 22nd, again, they're waiving the 30-day requirement, so we're okay on that. And again, we'd like to seek permission from the council to continue this hearing, study these documents, and bring it to you on the 12th.
Thank you, James. Any questions for James on this? Now, Mr. Attorney, I have one. This is a continuation of a public hearing, is that correct?
That is correct.
So there's no need to open it?
There's no need. You may want to see if anybody here is suppressing the need to speak. If you can open it then, if they do, otherwise, there's no need.
Any one here that really wants to address this tonight? Okay, then I won't open the hearing. We'll just, it's discontinued.
We will need a motion to continue.
But we will need a motion to continue. So I'll open it up. Mr. Sutton.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to continue P-023-06 and continue the hearing for the March 12th meeting.
Mr. Hutchinson.
I would second that, please.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to continue the final plat, the hearing on final plat, P-023-06. Any further discussion? Please register your vote. And that is unanimous. Next item on the agenda, item 14, Resolution Number R-2007-002-11, consideration in our action regarding holding a public hearing for the 33rd year Community Development Block Grant Project. Mr. David Fain again.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. The City of Halton City has been an active participant in this particular program for a number of years. Just to give you a brief background, this project is funded through the Department of Housing and Urban Development, and it is known as the Community Development Block Grant. The city has participated a number of years. Of course, as you well know, federal funding gets cut year in, year out. And this particular project, as when I talk about in a minute, will, we're asking for approximately $100,000 to fund this particular project. Couple of examples that the city has, these projects have been in the past, is a couple of years ago, as you well know, we had a CDBG project that funded a couple of playgrounds and did some overlays on some streets. I talked about Woods Lane in our CIP update a few minutes ago. That is also a CDBG project. But here again, just want to kind of describe what CDBG projects are. Before any money can be expended from the CDBG project, the post-project must be determined to be an eligible activity and meet the national objective by serving low to moderate income neighborhoods. Eligible type projects include acquisition of real property, improvements of public facilities, public services, rehabilitation projects, code enforcement, and economic development. The particular project this year that staff has identified is to reconstruct approximately 2,000 linear feet of substandard street here in our community. We want to, we're looking at Dana Drive, the 5,600 to the 5,800 block of Dana Drive, which is, goes from Denton Highway to Beulah. Currently, these streets are listed as some of our worst in our community. And this is according to our latest street survey. It has, this particular street has actually deteriorated to a point where northern maintenance strategy is acceptable. And so we need to do a total reconstruct on this particular project. And as you see, we want to replace the water and sewer mains and also the drainage on this particular street. There's actually none. There's actually not even some curb and gutter in some particular areas of these blocks. Anyway, with that said, as Mayor Lamford said, this is a public hearing, and we would ask that you open the meeting up for a public hearing and adopt Resolution R-2007-002-11. I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, David. Any questions for, for Mr. Fain? If not, I'll open up public hearing. Anyone want to speak for or against? If not, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion to dispose. Mr. Clark.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I make a motion that we approve Resolution 0R-207-002-11 as presented.
Ms. Branson.
That's a second again.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number R-2007-002-11. Any further discussion? If not, please register your vote. And that is unanimous. Next on the agenda is the Visitor Citizen Forum. This time is set aside for any person having business before the council that is not scheduled on the agenda to speak to the council. All comments must be directed toward the presiding officer other than an individual council member or staff. Each speaker must limit his or her comments to the subject matter listed on the speaker's request forum and must refrain from personal attacks toward any individual. Council cannot discuss or debate any issue brought forth at this time, nor can any formal action be taken, as it is not a posted agenda item in accordance with the open meetings law. Have Mr. Brandon Melton, would you come forward, please, and give us, repeat your name and address? And if you will, adjust that mic there, Brandon, for you so you can speak clearly.
Good enough there?
That's good.
Okay. My name is
Make yourself comfortable.
All right, all right. My name is Brandon Melton. I reside at 3505 Katrine Street. I'm also a local business manager, a business owner there at Stanley Keller and Halton Road in the old Schwain's Shopping Center. I run a music rehearsal facility. My interest today is to bring up a point of Parks and Rec. We, me and my business partners would like to install or help install a disc golf course in one of the local parks. Also of interest is a park that is no longer, that we were interested in, which is Old Barbrook Park, which used to be an old swimming area. I swam there when I was a kid, and it's kind of gone by the wayside, is locked up and not being used. I know that some of the city would like to see more park spaces being utilized and things like of that nature. But we have looked at North Park, at Denton Highway and 820. I'm really not familiar with proceedings of city government. I would like to learn as much as I can. And this is kind of my approach, my beginning point. I don't know where to go from here, but I'm here to let y'all know what my ideas are and open for any questions that y'all might have for me.
Chuck, you want, you want to tell him who he can talk to?
Well, you've got the, you want to learn all about city government? I'll be glad to.
I want to learn what it takes to put in this golf course, so.
You want to learn the good part. I understand, I understand. I've got your name, and let me get back with you.
Okay.
And I'll also meet with you and our park restoration staff. We can talk about, I'm very familiar with disc golf.
Okay, good.
I'd rather have a golf course.
Oh, yes, yeah.
We don't have enough space.
Sure, sure.
But I'll get back with you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you, Brandon. Appreciate it. Well, that's the only written one we had. Anybody else want to come visit to the Citizens Forum tonight? Okay, if not, we'll close the Visitor Citizen Forum and move forward on the next item agenda, item 15, resignation of board members. I think we've got one who wants to report that. Mr. Sutton?
I'll do that. Like to put forward the name of Allison Elliott Roach resigning from the beautification board for ratification.
Any other resignations? Please signify, ratify this resignation with your vote. And that is unanimous. Next item is item 16, appointment, or reappointment to boards and commissions. I have one appointment I'd like to make tonight. Ms. Beth Thompson to the ZBA, Zoning Board of Adjustment. She'll be an alternate. Any other appointments tonight? If not, please signify your ratifying as yes or no. And that is unanimous. Next, next item is the excused absence of council members. As I announced earlier, Councilman Chris Holcomb is out on business tonight, out of town, and need a motion to dispose. Ms. Branson.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we approve Mr. Holcomb's absence while he's on business.
Anyone else? Any second?
I need to say is excused.
Yeah, okay, excused absence. Mr. Sutton?
Oh, yes. I'll go for a second for that.
All right. It's been moved and seconded to excuse Mr. Holcomb's absence. Please register your vote. And that is unanimous. We have no further business at the executive session level tonight, and so our business is done here. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, and good night.